I'd like to call this meeting to order if you would please rise and join me in the pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. There was a slight change there in the opening of the meeting as this is the reorganization of the Auburn School Committee as a result of yesterday's election. So at this time, what I will do is accept nominations from the school committee members for a chairperson. Once voted, he or she will take charge of the meeting and entertain motions for the position of vice chair. Do I have a motion on the floor?
I'll make that motion that Judge Scobie remain our chairperson.
Mrs. Holloway has motioned for Mr. Scobie to be the chair. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. McCrillis has seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.
Should we hug now?
No, I'm sorry. There's still some restrictions in place. No hugs, no handshakes.
Congratulations, Mr. Scobie. It's now your show.
Thank you. You know, that, I'd just like to say, you know, I am honored that you, that you all have the faith in me to be the chair once again, and I'm honored that actually even though we were uncontested, you know, that several hundred, hundred people did get out there and vote for us, and I know that they've been supportive over the years. So even though it was a low turnout yesterday, I know that we're supported by, by the residents. And I appreciate the, the faith that they put in me and the faith that they put in the entire committee. So thank you for that. And that being said, I would entertain a motion to nominate a vice chair.
I'll make a motion that Jesse Heron to remain our vice chair.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Gail.
It is a vote. Congratulations, Jesse. You are vice chair. And we'll do this again. See how this, this year plays out. Hopefully a little bit better than the previous year. All right. And I don't think we have any citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens' remote, Dr. Hanfield?
No, Mr. Chair. We just have that piece before relative to successor for Elaine.
Oh, okay.
That we should probably read.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I will turn that over to you.
Sure. So this comes from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, and by statute, Chapter 71, Section 36, the school committee appoints a secretary. This is the person who is responsible for keeping the minutes of the meetings. The vast majority of school committees use either a member of the superintendent's office staff or a third-party secretary in this role. It's not recommended that school committee members serve in this capacity as it is exceedingly difficult to take minutes and participate in the business of the school committee. That being said, there are many school committees that by policy appoint a member to serve as either secretary or clerk in a somewhat ceremonial role as a third officer beyond the chair and vice chair. At one point, the superintendent in regional schools was the secretary by statute. I believe that statute was repealed in 1960s. And the MAS C highly recommends that the secretary to the school committee be either a member of the superintendent's office support staff, or that the committee directly hire slash contract with a third party for this role. So based on that information from MAS C, it's my recommendation that once again, you not appoint a member of the school committee as secretary. However, leave that responsibility that is currently with Elaine through her retirement, and then to her successor thereafter. And I believe we need a motion for that.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion that we do not appoint a secretary at this time, and let Mrs. Zottner do it through her retirement, and then her successor thereafter.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. And now I ask if there are any citizens' comments.
I do not believe so, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I wasn't sure if Jack was gonna come in.
Oh, Mr. Generelli. Yeah, he just asked for access to the meeting. I don't believe he's...
Oh, okay.
He just wanted access to the meeting.
Sounds great. Welcome once again, Mr. Generelli. And now we move on to special recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, I'd like to recognize, although not with us, Marcus Longo, senior at Auburn High School, who was designated as a National Merit Scholarship Award recipient. All winners of the Merit Scholarship Awards/Merit Scholar designees are chosen based on their abilities, skills, and accomplishments without regard to gender, race, ethnic origin, or religious preference. A variety of information is available for the National Merit Scholar Corporation to evaluate, the finalist's academic record, information about the school's curriculum and grading system, PSAT/SAT selection index score, the high school officials' written recommendation, information about the students' activities and leadership, and the finalist's own essay. There are three types of awards from National Merit Scholar: a national corporate and college award. Marcus is receiving the prestigious University of Chicago National Merit Scholarship Award, where he will attend in the fall. Again, Marcus and Mr. DeLongchamp are not here tonight due to previous commitments, but that's quite an accomplishment for Marcus, and wanted to recognize him this evening for that. So we applaud, applaud that, and also applaud his attending University of Chicago, another very, very, very fine institution.
That's great. Any, any comments?
Just awesome.
Yes. Congratulations.
It just shows you don't have to go to private schools all the time to get into really good colleges.
No.
Public schools can do it too.
Absolutely. And do we have any student representatives with us this evening?
We don't see them yet, but if they should pop in, we can do, I think, what we've done before, which would be to just allow them to pop in. I know they're both probably busy.
Right. Aaron may sneak into the coat room or something, the changing room.
Yeah, we'll keep an eye out for, for both of the, for both of them.
Sounds great. I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes of 4:28, 21.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Can we now move on to the superintendent's report?
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Just continuing with our updates on COVID. As I've shared with the community, I'm pleased to share that our COVID numbers continue to steadily decrease in the district. We were concerned about a small increase after April vacation, but we haven't seen that, which is good news. We continue to monitor the guidance from CDC and DESI regarding COVID guidelines and its impact on the schools. And as everybody knows, we had a somewhat of a surprise announcement early this week regarding the lack of needing to wear a mask outside during recess and other related activities for children. Teachers would be required to keep their masks on outside if they could not keep six feet of distance from the kids. But this was welcome news, and we shared it as soon as it was made available. And certainly, the weather this week, it's, it's been, it's been a good timing. It's been good timing. Just a quick anecdote. I was speaking to an instructional assistant at Packagog, and she was telling me the story about the little girl that she was talking to on the playground, and she asked her what she happened to like best about school. And without missing a beat, Mrs. Gaborio said to me that, she said, "I can see everyone smiles now." So, you know, and that's coming from a seven-year-old, you know. So, you know, when you, when you think about the impact that this has on our, on our kids, especially our littler ones, what a, what a priceless statement that was.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think a lot of, a lot of us are feeling that way right now. Obviously, we're still wearing masks, you know, in school, on school buses, and we'll, we'll see how that, that guidance evolves between now and September. But, you know, we're starting to move, you know, slowly, you know, back into some normalcy. So we'll see how it goes. But so far, so good.
Okay. Moving on.
With respect to FY22 budget, I'm sure as people are aware, Tuesday, May 4th, we passed our FY22 budget of $27,988,540.45. And again, this represents a 0.99% increase over last year's spring town meeting number of $27,676,055. And this is a 2.89% increase over the special fall town meeting number of $27,214,157. As noted in your packets, I sent a letter of thanks to our town meeting members for their affirmation of the budget this year, and also want to publicly thank our town administration, Board of Selectment and Finance Committee for their tremendous support through this process. It has been difficult, to say the least. Nobody wants to have to lessen their budget in a, in a, you know, special fall town meeting, but as a result of not receiving SOA money, we had to do that. We worked collaboratively, collaboratively with the town to work our way through that lesser number. And, you know, we also worked with the town to come up with a budget number for this, this coming year, FY22, that will allow us to, to keep pushing forward and doing good work in Auburn Public Schools. So thank everybody for their support, their questions, and input was, was really valuable. And I just appreciate and am thankful because that's not the case everywhere. And so just very thankful that, for their support. Close the book on FY22.
Yep. I would just echo those sentiments. As you said, it's not the same everywhere. And it's a situation where, you know, we may be giving back a little bit, but next year, the year after, five years down the road, there may be a situation, and actually, there has been, you know, within the past couple of years, where we found ourselves in a bit of a jam. And, and the town is there. Other departments are usually there to help pick us up. So the pandemic being one prime example, we're, we're working together. We're really, it's really a great, great community here. There's no selfishness. There's no, "I want a bigger piece of the pie than you." That just doesn't happen here. And like I said, it really matters when push comes to shove. Our backs are against the wall, and, and you know, we need a little extra help. They are there. They have our backs in, in every way. And so if we have to give back a little bit here and there, we don't, we don't love it because we always want what's best for our children. But we're team players, just like everyone else is. You know, very well stated, and I just wanted to make sure that it's understood that, you know, I think I speak for the entire committee when I say that, you know, that we believe we're part of a greater good here and part of a larger team than what's seated at this table. Okay.
Yes. Well said, George.
Yeah, I agree. Through the chair. I mean, Gail, you can attest this too. When we go to the conference down in the Cape, we're hearing from other school committees, they don't even speak to their Board of Selectmen, and they don't, you know, no one gets along in the town, and they can't pass anything. I mean, it's just one roadblock after another. So, I mean, kudos to the three of you too for, you know, no easy feat, for sure.
No, and it was kind of a good point, kind of a fresh start for them coming in. Not that, not that three of them aren't familiar with, you know, most of the players in town, but it's still, it's a transition, and I think it's been a smooth one. So, yep. Thanks to school leadership as well. All right. Moving on to new business.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So again, the generosity of, of local corporations continues to find the Auburn Public Schools. We recently received a donation of two cases of hand sanitizer from Mr. Gary Servideo, the facilities manager at Storrs, Kyle Storrs Endoscope in Auburn. It's my recommendation that you accept this donation, and a thank you letter is included in your packet.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to accept with gratitude the donation of hand sanitizer from Storrs in Auburn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that?
No, that's just wonderful that people think of us and do things like that for the schools.
I agree.
Yeah, the community's been, has been extremely generous with masks, hand sanitizer, face shields. You know, we're, we're very fortunate that, that people are stepping up and helping us out with that. It's, it's a cost that we don't have to incur, which is, which is a big one.
Yep. It's huge. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Moving on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before you tonight are the proposed dates for the 2021-2022 school committee meetings. I don't anticipate that we're going to need anything over the summer, once we adjourn in June. But if we should, then we obviously could convene on an emergency basis. But it would be my recommendation that we accept the proposed meeting dates for the 2021-2022 school year.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make the motion that we accept these meeting dates for the 21-22 school year.
Do I have a second?
A second. Listed here.
Any discussion?
Hard to believe. Were everybody looking at the next?
Oh, it's not hard to believe. We're, we're happy to, we're happy to see it. Trust me, we're happy to see it.
It's gonna be a better one, for sure.
We're happy to see it.
Through the chair, actually, do, so we do usually have a meeting just before the school year actually starts.
Yep.
So, and that's not here. And that's fine if we don't think of, I know we had so many meetings last summer as we were trying to navigate the new landscape. But do we think at least having a tentative date? If we don't need it, then we just don't need it.
Sure. So we could do that.
Anything comes up like right before the school year starts, or if we need it, you know?
Sure. Sure.
Finance issues?
Yep, we could do that. We could do...
And it can just be a tentative, you know?
Yeah.
More just so that everybody has it on their calendar, maybe, if that's where we...
Even Zoom if necessary?
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I, I think that we, then we know that everyone can commit to thirty minutes of time.
Sure.
And if you don't need it, it's fine.
Just looking at my, my calendar here.
If, if you need time to think about what a good date would be, I know, I would imagine a lot of the transition celebrations might be going on the week before as well. So that's, we could certainly pass this as an add as mentioned, the item for the next meeting to pull an additional.
So if we go, so if we were to go two weeks prior to September 8th, which would be our, the new, yeah, the annual meeting where we, you know, introduce the new hires and things like that, if we went two weeks prior, it would be August the 25th, which I have no problem with putting that, I mean, it's obviously the rule of the committee, but that's totally fine.
See, people might still be on vacation. I don't know.
I can't understand you, Dottie. I'm sorry.
People might still be on vacation?
Oh.
So I don't, I don't know. It's really just...
Well, as Jess said, we, we could always Zoom, or we could just leave it as a tentative, possible date. I think that might even be the best, best-case scenario, make that decision leading up to that time.
Okay. So what we can do then is we will, so what I've done here is I've just made a note. I know Mrs. Zotner is, is listening as well. So we'll put, we'll, we'll consider the 25th as tentative, and that we can determine the format as we get, you know, into the summer and just kind of see where we're at. But I think that's fine.
Okay.
Makes, makes sense.
Sounds good. All in favor of accepting those dates?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next item before you, we do this on the annual basis, is handbook updates for approval. What I did this year, which was a little bit different, was I had each school place their, their changes. As you know, it's a requirement of the school committee to approve any student handbook changes year to year. And as you look through this list, you can see much of it is just updating for the coming school year with names, dates, et cetera, et cetera. So it would be my recommendation that we, or that you approve that as presented.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the handbook updates as presented for the 2021-2022 school year.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
I just have a question through the chair. So we think ZipSlip will still be used next year? Sorry. Am I jumping the gun?
No, not at all. No, not at all. I was just looking to Dr. Chamberlain because she's...
Yeah, so we just had a discussion. I probably could have come out there. We're looking to potentially use it for our tennis purposes. But after the discussion with the principals, we think we're gonna stick with how we're at this point in time, whether it's a female, then a school mascot, or a secretary, or it's home court. So that was up for discussion.
Okay.
They use for some other things. For instance, this year, we just recently put a bus application on there. We're looking at some internal forms that we can use to automate, and things just stream. So there will be things. They can only possibly use some skills, such as things like that, to streamline the process and get the information out. So I expect that the school will be around. That particular limitation will go with that.
Okay. All right.
I don't, I don't need a poll.
Okay, good.
Don't jinx us.
And through the chair, the arrival dismissal procedures at Swiss, that's just as needed, going back to the way it used to be?
Correct.
Okay.
And I do have a question on AMS, the middle school. Are they eliminating the PBIS program and replacing it with something else? That was a positive behavior system that they used to...
Yeah, so the positive behavior interventional system, they are moving, they're moving to more of a hybrid. They're using some of that, but they're also adding an additional program to it. So it's not totally going away. They're just, they're just adding...
They're cutting it.
Augmenting it.
Augmenting it to suit their particular...
Correct.
Okay. Just curious.
Yep. Yep.
Sorry, one more question. The school and safety plan, that's just going back to normal as well, on Bryn Mawr.
Yeah. So what, yeah, I mean, at some point, we're gonna have to have a discussion about when we retire, you know, some of, some of the COVID-related stuff out of handbooks. I think right now, you know, as we talked about this as a group, with, with the executive, excuse me, with the state of emergency being lifted in June, with COVID restrictions being lifted, there'll be some, obviously, we expect there to be potentially, you know, some, you know, COVID-related issues in schools still, i.e. mask-wearing inside of buildings. But, you know, outside of that, you know, I think if you look through our, our program, our return to school committee, you know, that we put together, return to school program advisory guide, I, I think that will be retired as we move to the fall. I mean, if we needed to pull it back, we could always pull it back. But yeah, yeah.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Moving on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In your packets tonight as well, there's a donation from Central One Credit Union to the Auburn High School Music Program. Mrs. Jenny Bailey recently received a donation in the amount of $300 from the Central One Credit Union for the music program at AHS. It is my recommendation that you accept this donation with gratitude, and we will send a thank you letter. I believe actually, there's probably one in your packets already.
I would entertain that motion.
Make the motion to accept the donation of $300 from Central One Credit Union for the music program at AHS?
Second it.
Any discussion? Don't jump the gun.
Yeah, he's a pro at this, you know, so we can't.
No, obviously.
Don't eye before it's your chance to eye. Okay?
All right. So any discussion on that?
No, that's just another great community.
Yeah.
Remember.
No, it is. Again, it goes back to what we were talking about earlier.
Yeah.
It seems like many more people than we realize have our backs here. So thank you for that. Now, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Thank you. Moving on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're pleased to announce tonight that we are creating an autism program for our students through the movement of personnel and buildings that will enhance our autism programming for students in the district. Students in kindergarten through grade three will stay at Bryn Mawr in Packagog, and we're moving our program at Swiss to the middle school, so grades four through eight will be together. We're doing this to provide our students with an autism diagnosis, the opportunity to lessen their transitions, stay with personnel who know them for a longer period of time with expertise in this area, and to provide additional support to our students with moderate special needs at Swanson Road. So one of the things that we've talked about a little bit loosely, just because COVID's been the dominant kind of topic of discussion, but is, you know, how do we seek to lessen our special education costs as a district while at the same time improving our students' programming in district? And so this is one step in that direction. We recognize that there was a need to improve what we're offering our students with, with autism. We also recognize that there was a need at Swanson Road because of the number of students here with moderate special needs to increase their programming there. And so we made this, this move, and we're really excited to see it happen and go forward. Parents, parents and students, I should say, parents on behalf of students, had conversations with Dr. Chamberlain and Mrs. Reed, our director of people personnel services, and they're excited. They're excited to have this, this program. So we're equally as excited, and it gives us another tool in our tool belt to deal with some of our children who have some special needs. So just wanted to bring that to your attention, and as we move into, you know, next school year, you know, targeting special education and how we can increase our capacity in district is gonna be a targeted area of focus for us. So we're pleased that we were able to do something already at the start of, for the start of next year.
Any comments, questions?
Yeah, I question it. Wouldn't, don't third graders go to Swiss? So Swiss is three, four, five?
Correct.
So kids with autism aren't gonna make that transition. They're gonna stay in Bryn Mawr back another year.
So they're gonna stay, right, till they're three, and then grade three. And then when they flip to grade four, then they, they're gonna move to the middle school where there's a four through eight programming.
Are they in separate programs now, so they're not gonna have the feeling that, gee, all my classmates went to a new school and I'm not? I mean, if they don't really realize that?
Sure.
Yeah, so we're going to do everything we can to assimilate them into the middle school culture. So there's already discussion about how they'll join certain classmates for certain parts of the day. The middle school has a very robust Rockets to Rockets program that everyone's excited to get more of our students into. And so we think it's going to be fine, but it is gonna be a transition. But we're putting everything that we can in place, and the parents were extremely receptive to this. Many districts around the state have very specialized autism programs. And so this is really, with an experienced staff over there, Mr. Clark is our special education teacher. We have our BCBAs who will be supporting the program. We really feel like this is the best step, even though there are always downsides to another change, right? But ultimately, this is going to eliminate their transition to Swiss and then to the middle school, which can be very difficult for students on the autism spectrum. As we know, it's difficult for all students, right, when they go from school to school, but more so for those students. So...
My question was focused on the third graders that aren't gonna go with the rest of the third grade to Swiss. But are they in a separate enough program so they won't feel like they got left out and everyone else went away?
They are. So they'll still be with classmates that they were with this year and probably the year before as well. So it'll be another elimination of a transition for them. They'll stay with staff and students that they're already familiar with, and a school community that's familiar with them.
Okay. And they won't feel like everyone else got promoted and they didn't?
No, they won't.
Okay, good.
I think, yeah, no, and then through the chair, Ms. Zottner, I think your question is, is, I think the answer is they're, they're in a sub-separate classroom now?
Okay.
Because of the needs that they have. And so to answer your question, no, it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't appear to them that everyone's moving on and I'm staying behind or whatever.
That was my concern.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what I thought it was, but...
Yeah. Okay. All right. Sounds good, then.
Sorry, I have another question through, sorry, Dot. You mentioned the Rockets to Rockets program. So would they, the students at AMS be heavily involved with the autistic kids, like through the Rockets to Rockets program? Like, what's that gonna look like?
Yeah, so it's gonna look like, much like it's looked like in the past. So it'll be for certain, sometimes they join a AP class, which is an adaptive physical education class, that we bring in some, some of the kids from the other classrooms to kind of facilitate the play. Sometimes they have different little project outings that they do with the children that'll be in this classroom. There are a variety of things that they've done over the years. So the Rockets to Rockets isn't gonna change. It's gonna be what it's always been in that regard. It's not gonna be pulling kids out of the gen ed class anymore than it has previously. But now we're gonna impact a larger population of kids by having more of our students up there.
No, I think it's a great, great idea. My daughter participated in the Rockets to Rockets program a couple of years ago, and it seemed like the big event was the Leicester event. And so she waited all year for that event. But it'd be great if these kids could be exposed to, you know, kids with special needs on a constant basis, if that is something they're interested in and not holding out for this one big event.
Yeah, and I think that is the intent, right? So whether it's a PE class, they've just made, recently made an investment in some, like lawn games kind of things, to kind of, it facilitates that social interaction as well as some physical activity to use... to kind of, it facilitates that social interaction as well as some physical activity to use for these rockets-to-rockets activities, whether that's an APE or just a, you know, an extra activity. And Mr. Clark is looking to see how frequently some of his students can get into classrooms, whether it's just for the beginning of the day for a certain period of socialization. So, it'll be in small ways and big ways, like, like what happens, happened in Leicester previously.
Through the chair, I think there's a child from the sub-separate classroom who goes to all my son in kindergarten and specials. It's been a great experience in there.
Yes.
Daily at least.
Yes.
One more question if I might. Now, do these children take, like, the small buses to school? So the fourth and fifth graders that are going to the middle school, are they gonna be on the big middle school buses? Or they gonna be separate going to school?
So, so they usually get specialized transportation?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Cause I was just thinking they'd be younger to be mixed in with the older kids at the middle school.
And on our specialized transportation, we have bus monitors as well, so-
Okay.
Yeah.
And through the chair, do we have a separate autism classroom? Or are they gonna be-
For the most part, yes. So they're gonna have two areas-
Okay.
That they're gonna be able to access overall for all the children.
Okay.
So that it'll, it'll provide some of that, yes.
Through the chair, I just have one about the numbers. How many kids are, are we looking at for these programs?
I think in total with the students who are already at the middle school, I think that classroom will have nine children, which is a very appropriate number of children. And what this has also allowed us to do is really recommission staff. So, Mrs. Reedy and I spent, I don't know, probably too many weeks on looking at all of the ABA staff, cause that's primarily who works in our sub-separate classrooms, and making sure now that each program was very well-staffed. And so by eliminating that program at Swiss, we, we, you know, redeployed that staff, so there's gonna be a very healthy staff ratio to support the students' needs.
Good.
Awesome.
Excellent, thank you. Moving on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just as you may have already seen on the, posted on the marquee outside of the high school, graduation is scheduled for June 4th on Memorial Field. It will look similar to last year's event, which was terrific. Similar to last year, we continue to work with Darlene Coyle and Eileen Alexander from the Town's Office of Health Inspection Services to make sure that we're doing everything within, you know, current guidelines, and they're changing constantly. We just had new graduation guidance come out today that we have yet to unpack. It came out at 3:30. But Dr. Chamberlain and I, with Mr. DeLong Champ, will, will look at that in concert with, with Darlene and Eileen, and, and, you know, make sure everything is, is where it needs to be, but, but that's, that's, it'll look, it'll look pretty much exactly a rerun of last year's ceremony, so. I also, you know, I wanna commend the high school staff, because this has been a tough year, and, you know, to not only put this off, but you may have seen on, on Facebook, they had what we call prom-ish on Saturday. It was kind of like a prom, but not really. If you saw some of the pictures, you saw the kids, you know, the girls getting their gowns, and the boys, you know, were a little maybe less formal. Still had ties on, someone with a full-blown tuxedo. They came with their best mask attire. And we had about eighty-five kids in our gymnasium at the high school. They decorated it beautifully. Again, everything was done, you know, with Darlene and Eileen at the, you know, the town level. And they had a great time. You see some pictures of them out there with their masks on, you know, we had, they had some yard games that they were playing in the parking lot. But really, a, a nice, a nice event, in another way, it's just, you know, tough year. We wanted to do something for them, and so we were able to do that. So they were, they had a great time, and it was, it was, it was a good night, it was a nice night, so.
I'll see this picture of someone standing there with a broom, like-
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Some feet apart.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. They, they did a great job. They really did a great job with, with the distancing and the masks, and, you know, the timing of all of this, and, and things changing on the state level, you know, but they, yeah, they, they did a great job. And, you know, they, they, you know, they had their annual paper dropping contest Friday, and, or Monday, excuse me, and they'll have their parade through town, and, you know, go from there, so. So, yeah, so, so good, good for them, and we look forward to their graduation, and I don't have my glasses on, I apologize.
Oh, you can use them?
Yeah, I don't know who that is, that's okay.
Yeah, that's, that's excellent. I saw some of the pictures, and as you said, anything we can give back to them considering how much they've missed over the past couple of years, it was a great way for them to get together, and, you know, one of their, you know, final, final celebrations this year was, that's excellent. So, yeah, thank you to the staff. They're always there, they're always there for the students, they're always doing the extra, but in times like this, it means so much more. So, I, you know, I thank them, and again, on behalf of the committee, I know that we're, I know that our core values are the same, I know we think exactly the same way when it comes to our students, so I'm comfortable in saying, you know, we thank, we thank the staff very much. Appreciate everything they do.
Okay.
Staying with the high school, just for one more, one more quick second. We were recently notified that Auburn High School was designated again as one of America's best high schools by U.S. News and World Report. Auburn was ranked in the top eighteen percent of schools in the country, placing thirty-two, or excuse me, three thousand two hundred and eighty-eight out of almost eighteen thousand high schools in the country. English and math proficiency, graduation rate, AP participation, and college readiness index comprise the bulk of the scarring criteria, so this is, I think, the fourth or fifth for the high school, so congratulations to them on that achievement.
We should have a banner or something we could aim on, on the high school, like we did on the other schools.
The blue ribbons.
Yeah, you know what's interesting, they, they have a variety of, so if you go into the building, there's, there are plaques, that they do send you plaques to put up. So, Mr. DeLong Champ is looking into, you know, what the, what the options are for this year, and, you know, we get a plaque to commemorate the year, but-
Maybe something on the marquee outside or something?
Yeah, 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 we could do that too.
For over the summer or something.
It's not a bad idea, yeah.
Let the taxpayers know their, their money's working.
That's true.
Hot for them.
Yeah.
Keep it coming. Just kidding. Alright, moving on.
Yes, so as you know, the USDA subsidized meals for our students this year, and it was terrific, because it meant every child, you know, would be able to eat school lunch for free, breakfast for free. USDA notified us that they'll be continuing that program through the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, so all of next year, our kids will be able to have access to breakfast and lunch, and it'll be subsidized by the government, so, really excited about that and thankful. And again, that dovetails with, you know, the Meals to Go program that Mrs. King has been running, and the thousands of meals that she has helped serve families and her staff. So, it's just great news, and again, as we start to recover from COVID and the economy being what it is, you know, many families have found this to be a great service, and so, to be able to do it for another year is exciting, so.
Do I understand, so nobody pays for lunches at the schools?
Right.
That is awesome.
Right, the government, the government subsidizes, yeah, the government subsidizes, subsidizes. At first, this year, it, we thought, initially it went through December of twenty, and then they notified us late that they were gonna extend it through this year, and then we got notice that it was gonna go through all of next year as well. So, yeah.
So they're all eating free?
Yeah, for right now.
Even remote, you can pick up free meals for the week?
Oh, wow.
Yeah?
Yeah, and that's in addition to our Meals to Go program, which is a separate program that Janice is doing, so.
That's terrific.
Through the chair, my fifth grader, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Mr. Chair.
Sit through the chair, I'll let it go.
Okay, thanks. My fifth grader says the breakfast is dynamite.
She likes it, huh?
Oh, yes.
That's good feedback.
Yeah, every day now. Sign me up for that breakfast.
No, I was just gonna say that I know that in my school, some students really appreciate it, maybe, maybe more so than others, and they take full advantage, so that there are always extra breakfasts kinda hanging around, and, and extra meals hanging around in the shop areas, and so kids just keep going back at the leftovers all day long. They'll get back from lunch and grab some more snacks, so, you know, if they, if they're hungry and they need it, then it's serving its purpose.
That's awesome.
Not necessarily just for breakfast, there's a lot of snacking going on, and it's, I just think it's great, because obviously, obviously they're, they're getting something that they, they didn't have, you know?
Yeah.
In some cases, you know, you know, they, they were doing okay, they were, you know, coming in full, but, you know, there, there were just some kids that are, you know, this is, this is like hitting the jackpot for them, to be able to snack whenever they want to, and I just think that's it.
And lunches are what, two, three dollars a meal?
Yeah, about roughly.
Yeah.
Yeah, roughly.
That's, that's a great savings for a family.
Yeah.
Especially if they have more than one child, wow.
Right, yeah, I know.
Or a hungry, a hungry boy that wants to eat more than-
I know what I paid for my, my, my son, who graduated last year, and it was, yes. It was, it was quite the bill. It got, it got progressively higher from when he was a freshman to when he was a senior. I, I spent quite a bit of money on feeding the boy, so, yeah. Yeah, this is a great savings to families, and like I said, it's, it's a great, great, great opportunity, so.
Go ahead.
Just on that note, I know that Mrs. King has been working with families, and she's encouraging families to preorder. They do have plenty of food available for students that come, that want a lunch, but they encourage families to go on and like preorder so they can get what they want, cause they're able to pick out their menus and that type of thing, so.
That's excellent.
So is there still some choice with what meals you get? Or is it just-
Yes, she has, yeah, there is a, the menu that they can pick from, but they're asked to order-
They have a la carte menu.
Oh.
Yes, where you can get little sides and fruit.
But that helps them better predict of how many people want to actually take advantage and eat the lunches and breakfasts.
Cause I was a fussy kid, and I wouldn't have liked it if I, they had to tell me what I was gonna eat every day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank Mrs. King.
Well, the thing, you're not fussy anymore.
You don't know me.
Oh, I do, that's why I said it. Alright, moving on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And last, before we move on to Dr. Chamberlain, is the superintendent's evaluation. This is a process that you are all familiar with, being veteran school committee members. Before your tonight is DESI's document for administrator evaluation, similar to what you've been presented with in the past with Dr. Brunel. You have my self-evaluation, comments on my goals, and comments under each of the standards. I'll quickly highlight some things here for you, and then I'll turn it over to Chairman Scobie to, to direct the committee on next steps. If you recall, in October, I brought before you a professional practice school, which was my participation in the new superintendent's induction program. You met John Brackett, who was my, is assigned to be my mentor or coach. And if you recall, it's a three-year commitment, so I just recently finished my first year in that program. And the deliverables, as I'll call them, would be the creation of an entry plan for the school district. The entry plan for me is a little bit different than maybe someone who's new to the district, because I'm familiar, but nevertheless, I still have gone through the paces, so to speak, of looking through everything Auburn Public Schools. In January, I sent a survey out to members of the school community that you might recall, asking them three questions, you know, what was really great about the district, what was an area that they felt that, you know, perhaps could, you know, bear a look at and maybe, you know, review? And then what were some things that they just never wanted to see change as part of the culture of, of the district? So tonight, what I wanna, I'm just gonna quickly tell you the themes that have come out, and then in our June sixteenth meeting, I'll have the, the full entry plan will be completed, and I'll walk through that in more depth. But the themes that, that emerged from the, from the survey was, and I'm gonna use the glowing, the glow and grow piece that you probably have heard from years past in, during learning walkthroughs. But some of the glows were strong administration, wonderful teachers, communication, caring community, strong academic programming, high standards, safety, co-curricular programming, iPads and technology, physical plant, i.e. schools, our special education services, our crisis response, utilization of data, transparency with the community, academic achievement, and then the support of, of the town administration. So those are some fairly common themes on the glow side. On the grows, and I would characterize a grow as an area to explore, develop, refine, and assess. There was a lot of discussion around diversity, equity, and inclusion, which is not surprising and certainly warranted. Social emotional learning, a look at cohesiveness between the buildings, PK to twelve. Utilization of data, which is, I guess, a continuation of utilizing data in decision-making. Creating the portrait of a high school graduate, what does it mean to be a graduate from the Auburn Public Schools? Physical plant, in particular, some, there were many comments about elementary buildings, obviously being the older buildings in the district. Parking issues that are related to, you know, Swanson Road and actually both elementary buildings. Continuing with our HVAC work, some gifted education programming, perhaps for students down the road, and then kind of a reworking of our website. So, that was very interesting, a lot of it not a surprise. And so, those are the themes that came, came out. So, I will kind of bring more of a, a final entry plan to you on the sixteenth, and maybe give you the executive summary, and then I'll, I'll have the entire report that people, you know, we'll post on our website, and people can read that, but then that goal, I don't know if goals are ever completely done, but at least it will be, it will have been met for this year, because again, it just, it just kind of go. With respect to kind of met and ongoing, one of my student learning goals was to obviously meet with principals and, and, you know, do walkthroughs, virtual visits, if you will, with principals, and to the extent that, that, you know, that that was available. You know, we, we had some informal visits that we did through October and December. In December, we finalized an MOA for evaluation with the union, and so we then had, you know, walkthroughs, and the goal was for me to help kind of coach the principals and for us to have discussions, you know, and calibrate, you know, kind of what we were seeing in the virtual environment, and then what we were seeing in the classroom environment, and Dr. Chamberlain did the same thing as well. So, that's another one that I would, that I would say is probably a met slash ongoing, because we're always gonna talk about what's going on in classrooms. And then the last goal that I had was the district improvement goal, and that was based on the review of a strategic plan, or our strategic plan that we know that we have. And then based on the findings in the entry, we would look at that, and then we would kind of have, take a cross-section of stakeholders, and take our entry plan and match it up against our strategic plan, and then make any recommendations for adjustments, you know, based on what we've just gone through in the last year or so. So that will be done over the summer, and will be brought to the committee early in September. So, that's where, that's where the goals stand. So there's been, there's been substantial progress, and like I said, some are ongoing. Some will continue to be in my future, you know, in terms of the work in the district, but, but that's where that stands, so. And then just, you know, within the, the four standards of the evaluation process, you know, there's the instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community, and professional culture. From an instructional leadership standpoint, I mean, first, let me just back up and say, I really, in a team environment, in a collaborative environment that we work in, it's, you know, it is not really a me, it's a we, but because of the way the state sets us up, it's about, we have to provide this document about me, as I'll provide one for Dr. Chamberlain, et cetera. So I just wanna make very clear that all of these efforts are due to everybody in the school district, but legally, we're doing this, so I just wanna make that, make that clear. I never wanna be the I guy. But with respect to instructional leadership, some of just, some of the highlights this year, you know, the safe environments, you know, that we had to make sure that we had for our kids, starting with return to school committee. You know, we knew we had to improve last spring's product, you know, to kids. I mean, obviously, we were all caught flat-footed with respect to how we were gonna do instruction in a hybrid format. You know, we, we, and I think we did that, I think we did that. Was it perfect at the start? No. But I think it got, it got better fast as we started getting into it and working through some things. We provided PD for our teachers on different learning platforms and how to be effective in a hybrid and remote, you know, environment. You know, we had to make sure all of our teachers have proper equipment, make sure all of our kids have proper equipment. We had to make curriculum alterations on the fly to meet our kids' needs, but also to meet, you know, DESI's student learning time regulations, and as, you know, Dr. Chamberlain reported to you on two different occasions, you know, we were right in alignment with what the student learning time regulations were. That wasn't the case in a lot of places. That wasn't the case in a lot of places, um, and we were continuing to adjust and refine, you know, to make sure that our kids were, were engaged to the highest level possible. Working with principals, like I just mentioned, making sure there was high engagement of our kids. And, um, you know, we also successfully negotiated, you know, a, a, evaluation, kind of revision with our teachers because we're still obligated to, um, evaluate them in this, in this environment, so. You know, there's, we, we accomplished a lot. Was it perfect? No. But we, I think we were responsive to, to making it, you know, as, as, as good as we could, given the circumstances. Under management and operations, um, you know, again, we had the return to school document, which was, um, I don't, I don't know if the labor of love is stretching it, but, um, it was a labor nonetheless. But we still had to execute it, right? It, you know, execution of the plan i- is really where it's at, you can write anything down, but if you can't execute it, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't do much, so I, we executed that plan, we revised it as necessary. You know, our concern was getting our kids to school safely as well as our staff. I think the plan that we did, uh, created, did that. We cremate, we created remote learning academies for families that weren't comfortable and, and those, I think for the most part were, again, um, you know, not perfect at the start, but I think they got much better as we went along. You know, striking that balance between when to open a school, when to close a school, right? When do you have enough teachers, when do you, you know, when do you make that call about COVID? Those are hard decisions, but I think we hit, for the most part, I think we hit the right balance. Uh, we talked a little bit earlier about our budget, you know, we, we came in taking a four hundred and sixty-two thousand dollar hit to start this fiscal year and we, we're probably missing three hundred and seventy-five thousand or so in chapter seventy because of the number of students that chose not to come. But we still managed to get through this school year and be in good financial shape and we're set up moving forward in good financial shape. We're on the cusp of, of bringing three contracts, you know, uh, to, to settle, um, in an amicable ma- amicable manner, which is good. And, you know, we, we continue to work and meet the needs of our teachers and students. We committed to bringing in a stable nursing corps, um, which we're proud to say we're carrying forward into next year. And we made it through multiple reopenings. We, I think we reopened three times, three reopening plans. Again, perfect? No, but I think we did okay and we'll do the post-mortem on a lot of this into the summertime when we can sit and breathe. With respect to family and community engagement, you know, I mean, uh, if I, I'm, I'm starting to get to the point where I'm dreaming of COVID emails in my sleep. I'm hoping those are gonna go away, uh, but we continued with our daily update, you know, our weekly updates and reminders. I, I took a big leap and put my face on video, um, every week this year. Just, you know, for nothing more than to just give people a touchstone, kind of just say, hey, this is what's going on in, in the, in the district. You know, the one that got the most hits was the announcement of whether we were coming back to school after the holidays. The others do get hits, I do have some faithful followers, um, a couple hundred strong. And, um, it's always nice to see them at, on a Saturday after I put up, uh, something on a Friday. We continue with our newsletters, um, you know, our collaborative work with the townspeople, you know, everyone, like I said, from town administration to our families, to businesses. We, we couldn't have asked for better support this year from, from everybody. And we responded to the concerns the best that we could, be it COVID, be it traffic at Swanson Road, um, you know, or, or other issues, you know, we, we just, we did our very best to do that. And then lastly, professional culture, as I've said a number of times, you know, we are a district dedicated to continuous improvement. You've heard me say that a number of times, you know, it's been something ingrained in us, you know, for, for years and years and, and I think that's continued this year. Our mission and core values is referenced often, George did it, uh, earlier. There, there isn't a meeting that I opened with respect to budget that we didn't talk about, you know, we frame everything we do around that. And I've spent a lot of time learning this year, learning about the district. I've spent a lot of time learning about COVID. I've spent a lot of time learning about HVAC, budgeting, um, diversity, equity, inclusion, you know, we'll talk more about that in a few weeks, but, you know, a lot of districts, you know, went right out of the gate on, on the diversity, equity, inclusion piece. I really felt that I and, and Dr. Chamberlain and, and others, we needed to really learn the work, not presume we knew the work, but learn the work. And we spent a lot of time this year in workshops, um, in conversations, talking to people to really understand what DEI is, what it means in a school system and what that would like, look like potentially for us moving forward, so. I spent a lot of time on that, uh, among other things, and, um, you know, as, as a representative of this, as the figurehead of this school district, I take that role very seriously and, and I, I, I do feel that, um, you know, personally and professionally, um, you know, given the climate that we've been in, um, that I've, that I've hit the mark, I haven't been perfect and I never will be. But, um, you know, I, I think, given the circumstances this year, I, I, I think we did okay. You know, so in closing, you know, the work's just beginning for us, um, the, you know, the glows were nice, but I'm obviously more focused on the grows right now, um, because it's, again, about continuous improvement. And, um, you know, those grows are big issues, uh, that we mentioned, but, um, that's gonna, uh, be the work that strengthens us as a school district, uh, moving forward, so. You know, mentioned, uh, in your packets, um, I talk a little bit more succinctly about the indicators, uh, in the sta- in each, each of the four standards. You also have, uh, my goals and you'll see my comments a little bit more succinctly in blue, but, um, that's, that's kind of the, the quick overview, um, of kind of my thoughts on the year and, and how it lines up. And again, you know, I, I thank everybody truly from the central office staff to our principals, to our teachers, to our families, all of you. You know, it, it, it's truly a team effort, as Chairman Scobie said earlier, and, um, just proud to be part of it and, uh, eager to wrap this year up, but not because it's been a tough year, eager to wrap it up so we can get into the work of the glows and the, and the grows and, and start to get back to school, um, the way it should be, so. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Excellent, well, well said. So. Yeah, so. I think you hit, hit upon, um, all, all, all the key points there, and as you said, you've got these documents for, for your perusal and we've, we've been through this before, so, so there's nothing new. I would just ask that, you know, you, you have the, you, you have the guide to the, um, superintendent's rubric and then you have the evaluation rubric. I would, I'd just ask that, you know, you take a look at this over the next, next few days, maybe over the weekend and, and if you could, um, populate the, the rubric sheet, you know, early next week, Monday or, or Tuesday, that would be great. I think that's, unless you have something really trying going on, you should be able to at least get through a couple paragraphs. If you need more, just say it right now and we can push it off, but I think ideally if we could maybe, maybe get these, um, done by Monday or Tuesday. And I would say maybe put them in a, a sealed envelope and, and drop them off here in care of Elaine, is Elaine coming into the office?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, or, or just hand it off to Elaine. Does that work for everyone? I don't like the way Gil's looking at that camera.
She has a biggie, busy, we can't.
She's being fussy. So, no, that was, um, that was a nice report and, uh, well, nice description of the, the job that you've done this year and, uh, always crediting those around you and, and, and your support staff and, and I would just echo those sentiments, yeah, it's, it is a difficult job, but certainly the, the load is lessened when you have the staff, that you have, um, a couple of them, um, with us tonight and, you know, and another hundred and something more, um, around the district. A couple hundred, I should say. So, um, any issues with that?
No, I, I can manage.
All right. That's good to know, are there any?
As long as I don't have to get up early in the morning to do it, I, I can manage.
Yeah, you can do it at midnight if you want. Any, any follow-up comments?
I do have a question, yeah, through the chair, and it, this won't affect your evaluation at all, I'm just curious. Because myself and a lot of other community members were involved with creating the strategic plan, it kind of seems like COVID put the brakes on that evolving.
Right.
Uh, document, so I'm just curious, like, did we lose ground because of COVID and because it's a five-year plan, did we basically lose a year?
Yeah. So that's, that's a great question and I, you know, so if we go back to our, our last strategic plan, right? We, you know, we had set it to be in motion for five years and I think we hit most of it in three and a half. You know, we hit most of it in three and a half in our previous cycle. So, um, I don't necessarily think we've lost ground, I think, um, a lot of the things that I quickly ticked off, you know, in, in the discussion, just the overview of our evaluation or my evaluation, um, a lot of those things you're gonna, are, are already populated within the, the, the strategic plan. I think the biggest hits in the strategic plan would be anything that's community-related, right? Because obviously we couldn't make those inroads, uh, to the extent that we wanted to. But I think, you know, we made gains with technology, how could we not, right? Between devices and training and, um, you know, so it's not, you know, when I say we're gonna evaluate that strategic plan against the entry plan, you know, it, I don't mean to imply that we're just gonna throw it all away or change the whole thing, uh, at all. If anything, I think it's gonna affirm that we're still on course in many areas. There may be just some things that we have to kind of think about and say, okay, if we went off course because of COVID, how are we gonna get back on? What does that look like? And we just wanna make sure that it's manageable, right? We don't wanna have too many things out there, we watch, we just wanna review it and, you know, maybe some things have changed, you know? Hybrid instruction is probably something that should never fall off of our radar, um, but it's not something that's currently explicitly stated, right? In our, in our strategic plan. And it's not just necessarily because we could have another pandemic, but, but really we don't. But there's all kinds of reasons why we should continue, you know, with our hybrid instruction in some way, shape or form. You know, so, so it's things like that. And so I'd be looking to, you know, folks that had a hand, you know, in it. You know, I don't envision it would be kind of a World Cafe-type model. I would envision it to be similar to how I handled the survey, that I would kind of put the documents out. I would, you know, notify anybody who wanted to comment, but specifically the people that were involved in that creation of that document. Because I want them to be able to, you know, have some time to look and, and have their comments and similar to kind of how I filtered, you know, the entry plan documents, we would filter them the same way and then go from there, but I don't feel that we're substantially behind at all. I just think we have to look and maybe do some adjustments.
I mean, I agree with you there, especially with the adjustments, I guess, because of COVID, there's a lot more behavioral health focus.
Yes, exactly.
That we could certainly tie in more.
Sure.
To what we currently have going.
Sure.
And the kids really started, you know, with the Black Lives Matter movement, they really started to focus on civil justice and, um, you know, that could be a threat too, that we could tie in.
Yeah, I mean, I think you're, I think, right, I mean, I.
That's exactly.
That's exact, you, you hit the nail on the head, that, I think that's exactly what you're gonna find, you know, when we go into our curriculum part of that plan, we're gonna probably have to tweak a few things, so we're gonna have to put some more emphasis, you know, on some of the curricular, you know, initiatives that we're gonna bring forward around diversity, equity, inclusion. And what does that look like, you know, and, and how does that square? And, you know, is, is there something currently there now that we can fold in, you know, so that we're hitting, you know, two things at once? Or are we gonna have to just kind of maybe readjust kind of the landscape a little bit to what we're driving at, you know, based on conditions right now, so, you know? So we'll see, I'm, I'm actually interested, I'm really interested to get into that work, um, you know, and, and see, you know, kind of what that will look like, but, I don't think this is, this is a, there are gonna be some positives that come out of COVID, believe it or not, and I, and I think we're gonna see some of those positives through this process. We're already starting to see some of them now, you know?
It seems like you have a, a, a chairperson if you wanna form a committee, um, related to the strategic plan.
I'm on the committee already.
Oh, okay. I should have known.
Well, but yes, but you, we may need a, we may need a chair of, a co-chair.
Oh, yes.
Yes, okay.
Something.
Well, if we can do that remotely from, from the beach this summer, I'm, I'm all over that.
You'll, you'll all be well apprised of what's going on with that, no worries.
No, of, of course, I'm joking and if there was any, ever any input or, um, assistance that you needed, I'm there, so.
We have that on tape?
Yeah, well.
Yep. Put us as, yep.
Yeah, but through the chair, I mean, the committee will have that input because ultimately you're the ones who, who are going to vote to accept it, just as you voted to accept, you know, in twenty eighteen, the, the one that we have now. You'll vote to, you know, to review and accept and, you know, ultimately, you know, you'll be able, you, you'll have, you'll have strong input into it if you want to, you know, so. So you'll, you'll be able to do that.
Excellent.
I think as we've known, nothing's done in a vacuum, so.
No, thank you for that. Any, any further questions or, or comments regarding superintendent's evaluation?
No, I ju- I couldn't help thinking though, I bet your families missed you something awful this year.
Well, Julia, I don't know, Julia's in Stillwater, Oklahoma right now for softball. So, um, and she's been pretty wrapped up in that all year, so, I don't know, maybe.
I would think.
I'm kind of missing myself a little bit, uh, you know.
Yeah.
It's, it's just been.
I mean, every weekend, it seems like you've been, so many of them have dealt with COVID and.
Yeah, all of us, but you know, it's, and, and several people have said that to me, but it's, it's, it's just, it's the nature of the work and I, you know, it's frustrating and as much as, you know, I, you know, at times, you know, we're talking to each other on a Sunday night at nine-thirty, you know, because something cropped up, I mean, it, it's just, it's the job, it's the work, it's, it's, it is what it is.
But this year, more so than ever before.
Oh, absolutely, this, this has been, this has been a year for all of us, I, we've, no, I mean, my twenty-five years, no, I, Mr. Scobie can probably comment from a teacher's perspective, I mean, no. It's been twenty-four seven, it's been non-stop, you know, it's been hard to take a breath and, you know, that's why I just, you know, it's, it's exciting to see hope on the horizon. It was great to get our kids back all on April fifth. You know, that was.
Yeah.
That, you know, that decision has paid off, you know, I mean, we've, we've incurred, you know, a little bit of COVID stuff, but I think we're gonna continue to do that as we move forward, you know, I, but yeah, it's been, it's been, um, yeah, it's been a year.
Yeah.
It's been a year, to say the least, so.
Just think about how easy it is to do this year.
I know, everyone keeps saying that, just saying next year will be a breeze and I, you know, but. But in all sincerity, and I know Dr. Chamberlain and, and I know Cecilia and others, if they were here would say it, you know, it, it's, it's what we do and, you know, I, I, I wouldn't wanna do it anywhere else but here, you know, it's like, these are our kids, these are our families, you know, it just means a little bit more, you know, and, and so, yeah, I mean, would I prefer not to be, you know, doing something on Sunday at ten o'clock with Dr. Chamberlain and calling families about a bus issue and a COVID thing, but it's just, it is what it is, you know, so.
Well, you're certainly appreciated for all your hard work.
Thank you. It's a big team effort, so.
Absolutely.
Great team.
Great team. And speaking of team members, um, we will move on to teaching and learning, Dr. Chamberlain. Oh, she's quick getting up there. Didn't even finish the introduction.
So just a couple of things this evening. I thought it was a good night to take a moment to put it out there that we are knee-deep in preschool and kindergarten registration. So whoever's out there listening, spread the word, the sooner people register, the sooner they get their information in. We're already planning classrooms for next school year and so we would like all of our kids that are going to be with us, um, you know, that, that we should know about them and have the information we need. We're actively reaching out to any families who chose to homeschool this, this year because of the pandemic, uh, to see what their intentions are so that we have their names, uh, in line, but please spread the word, anyone out there listening. Registration is open and available on the school website, it's easy to do, if anyone needs help, they can certainly call here, call Kate Flynn, uh, and we'll help them, but we really need everybody's information, so the sooner that can happen, the better. And as much as this is almost a, maybe a, a four-letter word, I just wanna thank everyone's support, uh, we're heading into MCAS, right? MCAS started in, in some of our schools, it'll be happening over the next few weeks. And I, I wanna compliment the principals on the work they've done to just, it's, it's just another task this year, it's just something we're going to go through. Families have been, for the most part, wildly supportive, knowing that we have, we are charged to do it. So I wanted to thank everybody in the schools for their efforts around it because it's not on the top of the priority list for most of us right now, but it's gotta be done. And so we appreciate the support from the families and understanding that it's gotta be done. And, you know, we hope it'll give us some information we can use, but that is happening right now, it's an enormous task for the principals to organize, schedule, cover, all of those things. So, we're in it, hopefully it'll be over as, as soon as it starts. But I just wanted to take a moment to thank you guys too, cause you've been supportive through all of these crazy things that we've had this year, so.
Nice to say through the chair, my daughter's teacher talked to her about it in third grade, they've never had it, and she made them, and just like, yeah, it's another thing we have to do.
Yep, yep. Like, we didn't want anybody to stress.
Only this one's not getting canceled.
Through the chair, I did just have one question, and I've just gotten this and I don't know how to get to this, um, because the world's opening up and kids are catching up on their, over to physicals and things like that, um, if someone needs to miss part of a day of MCAS in general, is, or do they make it up, do they need to? Do they need to play with things that have?
Yeah, no, there are makeup sessions.
And how, or, or maybe it would just be better to just remind folks on any of the sites or in any of the newsletters that, um, cause I've, I had a couple of parents already called and said, I'm like, don't tell me, it's all your teacher.
Oh, yeah, they should reach out to the schools because I'm gonna tell you that, I mean, besides that, this year, we're giving some MCAS to remote students.
Okay.
So students who are still remote. Some of those are coming into the building to test, some of them are taking it at home.
Okay.
So when I tell you the variables that have been dealt with this year, that's a minor one for a principal to manage, quite frankly. They just need to, you know, let the principal know. Um, and they'll be walked through that for sure.
Okay, great.
So, yeah, that's been another whole new wrinkle in all of this, is, is kids who are remote. So it was a daunting planning challenge in the buildings that take this. I mean, and, you know, the, just the technology piece of that, right? So kids have been remote, did they update their iPads? Do they have what they need on it? Cause they haven't been in schools, like the kids that have been in schools. So just a lot got, went into it, and we just appreciate the efforts and the support of our families.
How long does it take? Like, they said it shortened this year, is it like an hour and a half?
Yeah, they did. It's about an hour and a half. You know, sessions are different at each level.
Yeah.
But usually when there were two sessions, they're only doing one session. So they tried to almost cut it in half from what it had been. So, you know, that's why I just, all the principals are like, it's okay. It's just another thing we're gonna do. Nobody's gonna stress about it, we're gonna go through, we're gonna do it, we have to do it, and then it's gonna be done. So that was, we talked about that at length with the principals. Because, you know, they all wanna do, the teachers want the kids to do well, the principals, all that, but it's not the year, right?
Right.
We just need to do what we need to do, and it's all gonna come out in the wash and we're gonna be okay, so.
And everybody's behind, it's not just our kids.
That's right, that's right. That's right.
Yeah, we're, we're okay.
Yeah, it's fine, so.
I'm just so sorry they made them go through it. That time could be used much better by teachers teaching their children.
And, and we agree with that.
Cover the curriculum that.
Yeah.
They've been hard pressed to do.
And adding social emotional stress to children, you don't need it.
Yeah, yeah.
That's.
But that's why I really believe the principals downplayed it. We don't need to add another stress on our kids about this assessment.
I'll have to agree with the chair, you know, at our household, it's like, oh, I, I get more time to read my book after, during class.
Yeah, there you go.
You know, and that's how our teacher said, you bring your favorite book, bring two.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
It's gonna be a quiet day, we're not gonna have homework. So at, at least in her classes, it was definitely just, it's a homework day, you know, so.
Yeah, good.
Should I go?
No, go ahead.
At the fifth grade level, somehow these teachers have managed to make these kids excited about it, so.
I don't know if it's possible, but Kate is pumped by MCAS.
They do a watery ticket since they take the test.
They must be, or paying them or something. I said, I know I told you. Yeah, there's like candy involved and love notes and all this crazy stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
So they're great, the teachers are amazing, they're just awesome.
Beth, if I could just get in one more question. Now, where are the preschool and kindergarten classes? Are they just at Bryn Mawr and Packerjoke, or are there still some at the high school?
All of the preschool classes are now at the high school.
Oh, all the preschool at the high school?
Yes.
And that leaves the kindergarten at the.
Yep, at each of their respective schools.
Oh, okay.
Yep, yep, it's been great having the preschool all together, so serving as the principal there. It's been great, the teachers have loved being all together. You know, they get to collaborate much more frequently. The kids are, even just to see each other outside this year has been good, so, yeah, it's great.
Okay, I kinda forgot how that it ended up, thank you.
And I will tell you that's the teachers who came from PAC, the preschool teachers who came from PAC to the high school, are very anxious for next year when they can have the high school interns in helping them. We could do that this year, so.
I know, that was gonna be amazing.
They're excited about that, so. Yeah, and you know, we've had kids ask, the high school kids asking, but just wasn't in the cards this year. On one other note, before I forget, another little student recognition. Brandon Burnett, who is a member of our Encore program, you know, that's a first year program for us. It's gone exceptionally well. He recently landed an internship with Price Chopper and Whole Foods. And so he's spending, I think it's six weeks, doing some virtual training. So he does that here on the computer. And once that's done, he'll go for another four weeks of training in one of the stores. And then after that, hoping it works out to a position with the store. So it's kind of our first big graduate from that program. So everybody, Ms. Quarian was beyond herself excited.
Yeah, through the chair, just a bittersweet day yesterday because he's, Brandon's been with us since he was a freshman. And we had his last team meeting here yesterday. And just to see, you know, the, watching them mature and then watching them get ready to go. And, and I, you know, I just remember where he was as a fourteen-year-old and where he is now as a twenty-two-year-old.
Wow.
He's got such a wonderful opportunity and, you know, as Dr. Chamberlain said, you know, Encore is a, is another program, you know, kind of a first out of the box type of thing. You know, again, aimed at how can we reduce our costs, but yet make a program better for our kids. And it's, it's been, it's just been a tremendous program, you know, this year. And, and we look forward to, to seeing Brandon go and grow and.
Yeah.
Visiting him at, at Price Chopper, you know, he's, he's in here doing his, his online trainings. Every morning I see him, I say hello. And, you know, that's, it's, it's just nice to see. And, and you, our ability to do that within our school district is just such a powerful thing. Because in many cases, you know, their students are outplaced. And then you just kinda lose track because you don't see them every day and some of them you don't see for years and, so.
One of the reasons he got the job was because he had so much experience.
Right.
Because through rise and evolve, he's gotten experience in working in a variety of places. So that really helped him to be selected for the position, so. Really good stuff. And on that same note, some time ago I had mentioned we were having high school interns that were going to get a paid position within our elementary and middle school, um, schools through a grant, through the Department of Ed. And so they've been doing that unbelievably well received by the receiving schools to have two, sometimes three kids come in during the day to help out. But now that they're graduating, five of them are going to work at least four hours. They can come in every day because there's still money left in the grant. So they have an old, nice little, little job going forward. And it's just been a great benefit to the schools, so a lot of good things happening.
That's great. Without, without giving anyone any additional homework, it would be great when those visits take place, if we could get a little bit of video, maybe some still shots, with some narratives and let us know how.
Sure, that would be amazing.
You can't, we can't, sure, just be careful what you wish for because they, they will talk to you for a week. They'll show you pictures for a week, yeah? They will come sit right down on the floor and just say, and look at this, and look at this.
I would love to see a presentation. As, as you said, as, as long as I've been a part of this district, the goal has been to keep these students with their pairs as often and as long as we can. And, and, you know, my few visits, tours of the, of the district, I've seen that in, in all areas, in all schools, and I just think it's phenomenal. So I think this is kind of a capstone to that. And, you know, I'd love to see, I'd love to see the follow-up, and I'm sure the rest of the committee would as well. As long as it's not, you know, too much work.
And once again, we've got community support, helping our students.
Yeah, absolutely.
Tremendous community support, tremendous support.
How many students do we have in the EVOL program right now?
Uh, right now, we have four. We're hoping to go to six or seven, we're waiting on one that might have another opportunity for next year. So it's growing already, you know?
Really?
Yeah, it's, Mrs. Quarian's done a wonderful job in her staff.
A great job.
Yeah.
That's great, thank you. All right, now continuation of the positivity with some business and financial.
And just before I start my report, just to add on to that, it's great having the Encore associates in our building, I mean, it's just great. We, we at Central Office really enjoy seeing them, speaking with them and working with them, and they, they're a nice addition, we really happy having them here, so.
Great to hear.
Yeah.
Okay, so I've placed a year-to-date budget report in your packet. It's dated May eleventh, as well as transfer document with transfers between the same series and some different, um, series for your approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions?
Okay.
Seeing none?
Seeing none. I seek your vote on the transfers.
I don't stand that motion.
Make a motion to approve the transfers between series as presented?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
As we approach the end of the current school year, I'd like to request your permission to allow us to begin making omnibus transfers with regard to the FY twenty-one appropriated budget. All transfers will continue to be made with the input from Dr. Handfield and the Auburn Leadership Team as we work together to meet the needs of our district while expanding, while expending the funds in the most beneficial and cost-effective manner. If approved, I will document all omnibus transfers from this point forward and report them at the remaining school committee meetings for the fiscal year.
I don't stand that motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the granting of omnibus approval to make transfers through the closeout of fiscal year twenty twenty-one.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
Next, I'm recommending that the school committee vote to approve the establishment of a new revolving account to be named Encore to, for the Encore students. The new account will be funded with the money presently being held in the Project Enterprise Revolving Account number two four oh nine, which has been dormant since two thousand and ten. These funds would then be used to provide support to, for our Encore program located at Five West Street, established in two thousand and twenty to service our eighteen to twenty-year-old students as they transition to adulthood, which we've just talked about. By changing the name and moving the current balance in the Project Enterprise account, we will be able to maintain the financial history and still utilizing the funding for the Encore program. And then moving forward, any tuition payments received for Encore participants from other area districts, we might have some come in from other area districts, will be deposited into this revolving account to support future programming. The fund is to be established in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter seventy-one, Section seventy-one F, for non-resident tuition. So upon your approval, if you, if you so choose to do so, I'll ask CFO Casnovitz to establish this fund and transfer the inactive balance of four thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars and ten cents from Project Enterprise to the newly established account entitled Encore.
I don't stand that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the establishment of a new revolving account to be named Encore.
Do I have a second? Any discussion?
Through the chair, I actually just have one question, specifically to the account. First of all, I think it's a fantastic idea. So thank you for thinking ahead, you know, forward and, you know, and planning ahead so this, that this can become a robust program. With the type of account it is, but this is just because I don't understand what grants can go in there, is it limited with what money it can receive? So if community members wanted to, you know, support the Encore program, is, is, would this hold any of those donations, or would that just need to be separate?
Well, it's a revolving account, we could, we could most likely accept donations.
We could, we could accept donations, um, typically revolving, well, revolving accounts, any, any monies collected and deposited into those accounts, you know, have to be expended upon the, the, the reason for the, for the revolving account. So yes, I mean, if people wanted to make donations to Encore, absolutely. It would go into that account and then it would, you know, turn around and, you know, be utilized to help support their, their program and, and expenses. Right now, one of the things that, that wasn't established last year just because of the nature of COVID and the way last year ended, you know, as we got Encore up and running, um, we kind of, we didn't think about, how do we, we forget, we forgot to put a separate supply line item in there for them. And so, you know, they do have expenses that come up, whether it's, you know, going grocery shopping to do certain things or, or purchasing different things for their lessons. So that's, that's what this is. And this Project Enterprise account that's dormant, this actually is an, uh, this account was a, attached to our alternative education program from way back.
Yeah.
And our students in that program at that time, and, and leading up to it, would do things for the community, whether it was like copying or whatever, and then people would like give donations to kind of help support them. The nature of our, of our alternative education program has since changed. And so that's why that, that money is just sitting there dormant. And so we thought it was a great opportunity. It's like, I don't know, four thousand dollars or so, right?
Four thousand seven hundred and eighty, yeah.
Yeah, it was something like that. So it's a substantial amount of money that we can, you know, get moving in there for the Encore program. And then sure, we, we would be more than grateful for donations and, you know, we'll look at other ways for us to fund it as well.
Okay, great.
Also, the Encore, they're responsible for the planters out front. They've been doing some planting. And they're also beginning to work on the garden out back at the middle school. They've been doing some plantings, they've been starting their seedlings and growing them, and they're transplanting them outside, so. And, um, we've gotten two night, we have two tables out there as well, so. One of them will be donated shortly to a family that's donated some money in honor.
The Folklife family, um, the son Jacob graduated, um, a couple of years ago. Wonderful family and, uh, just a great young man. They donated in memory of Jacob's grandfather, two really nice picnic tables to go out in the back. And then we've established, like Cecilia said, we established a garden. And the seedlings really started in, what, January? We had like NASA hydroponics going. I, I was in here watering these things and like over vacations and breaks, making sure they weren't freezing to death. But they've, they've taken, and so we've now transplanted them and we hope that they grow. So, yeah, so there's a lot of things that they're, that, that, that are popping up that are attributable to them.
Yeah.
So, um, there, yeah, just, just, it's been a great addition and this will really go a long way in helping them do other things.
That's excellent. So Mrs. Harrington thought those were for school committee?
Yeah, Mr. Scobie said, just grab one on the way out.
She's gonna have to take them out of the car and put them back. I'm sorry, but it's just wrong.
Working on all the different schools and trying to get them all prettied up for, you know.
That'll be great. And thank you to the Folklife family, that's awesome.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
Busing registration for the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two school year continues. And we're heading towards, we're quickly approaching the June first deadline in which anyone wishing to have their child or student ride the bus, they must register. We've recently introduced, through the help of Dr. Chamberlain, doing a great job, we ended up doing, introducing zip slips as an option for busing registration on May third. And since then, we have received five hundred and forty applications for busing. And people have been sending them in. We, we still have some people that need to send in the payment as well, but they, they are aware of that. So when they fill out the application, they still submit payments. So they either send in a check or they go onto the Unipay, um, online program on our website and pay through there, so. But, um, yeah, so, um, sorry, last five. So our total busing applications right now received to date are eight hundred and seven. And so we're hopefully gonna get some more because we usually get well over like twelve hundreds. So I'm hoping for more, and with the COVID restrictions being lifted, hopefully more people will decide to ride the buses, um, which we, they've been very safe this year and, and the students have been doing a great job wearing their masks. And the students have been doing a great job wearing their masks. And it's been, it's been a good year on the buses, so everything's been going well. But I'd like to clarify a few things with regard to the busing registration. We've had a lot of questions and a lot of people reaching out. All students who are to ride require a new registration form for the new school year. Some people think that they've already filled one out, that it's, you need a new one every year. Number two, if you submit an application without payment being made prior to June 1st, you will be assessed a late fee with no exceptions. So if you give us a registration but you haven't paid and you're required to pay, you'll get the late fee. And so a lot of people will be like, well, sent in the registration, but you have to send in the registration with the money as well. All students in grades 7 through 12, this has been a question, are required to pay regardless of the mileage. They all pay unless you're on free and reduced status. And due to the pandemic, all students have been allowed, as we've talked about the school lunch program, to participate in free lunches this past year. And we'll be able to do so again next year. But in order to say you are free and reduced status on the application, a lot of people say they were free and reduced years past, they need to fill out a new application each year. And it needs to be approved through the food service program. So we're all, right now, all the students are free and reduced. So everybody would be free riding the bus, but that's not the case. You actually have to be approved through the food service program. So Mrs. King is available to answer any questions and they can be directed to her directly. And I know her assistant, Mrs. Loustad, has been addressing a lot of issues and, you know, issues but concerns or questions with parents, so. But I just wanted to bring those points up because every year we have a few questions about why people, you know, why I'm getting a late fee or why, you know, why I'm not, why I have to pay, so, just so, okay?
Thank you, and thank you for that report. Any further questions? All right. And I see an executive session here.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we do need probably 10 minutes or so just to go over a few things.
Okay, I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion per Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to enter executive session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and Section 3 to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with union personnel.
Do I have a second? Roll call vote. Dr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Ms. Holloway?
Yes.
Ms. Harrington?
Yes.
Ms. Cloughman?
Yes.
And Mr. Scobie, yes. It is a vote. Good night, everyone.